Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, we will now begin the enhanced interactive dialogue on the human rights situation in Eritrea. Please have a seat. In its Resolution 35/35, the Council decided to hold at this session an enhanced interactive dialogue on the human rights situation in Eritrea with the participation of the Special Rapporteur, the Office of the High Commissioner, civil society and other relevant stakeholders. I would like to welcome our distinguished presenters. It's Ms. Kate Gilmore, Deputy High Commissioner for Human Rights; Ms. Sheila Keterud, Special Rapporteur on the Situation of Human Rights in Eritrea; Ms. Remi Noguilumbo, African Commissioner on Human and People's Rights; Ms. Veronica Almedon, Information Forum for Eritrea; and Ms. Pamela Delargy, Public Health Specialist. Before I give the floor to the presenters, I would like to remind you that the list of speakers opened on 21st February and I will close it in 15 minutes. I will now give the floor to our presenters, and each presenter will have five minutes for his or her statement. So I start with the Deputy High Commissioner for Human Rights. You have the floor, madam.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Distinguished delegates, ladies and gentlemen, as you may be aware, in recent times, the Office of the High Commissioner for Human Rights has been engaged in dialogue with and provided technical assistance to the government of Eritrea, including in the form of a mission to Asmara in October last year. I will elaborate further on this engagement in an oral update on Wednesday, 14th of March. Today, however, I wish to focus on the human rights situation in the country. Since the Council's last deliberations on this important question in June of 2017, our office has continued to receive reports of severe curtailment of human rights in Eritrea. In the past year, we've received worrying allegations of restrictions of freedom of religion, including allegations of arrests of over 100 persons practicing religions not officially recognized by the state, as well as the suppression of a protest outside an Islamic school after its 93-year-old founder was arrested for opposing takeover of the school by the state. The man died two weeks ago on release from detention. It remains difficult for us to verify such allegations and to assess overall the human rights situation in Eritrea, given our restricted access to the country, the absence too of independent actors, whether media, non-governmental organizations, or others who can monitor and report on the situation from within the country. This Council, and the Special Rapporteur on the Situation of Human Rights in Eritrea, as well as the Commission of Inquiry on Eritrea, have repeatedly called on the government to cooperate, to allow human rights defenders and independent civil society organizations to operate without interference, to permit independent human rights monitors unhindered access to the country, including to places of detention. We reiterate that call today. Excellencies, in 2016, the Commission of Inquiry on Eritrea found reasonable grounds to believe that crimes against humanity, namely enslavement, imprisonment, enforced disappearances, torture, other inhumane acts, persecution, rape, and murder, had been committed since 1991. The Commission noted that despite the state's increased engagement with the international community, still there was no evidence of progress in the field of human rights. I regret to advise that this state of affairs remains unchanged. The Commission's 2016 findings on extensive use of arbitrary arrest and detention remain relevant. Detainees are rarely brought before a judge after arrest or being tried, which enables enforced disappearance and the use of torture. We urge Eritrea to immediately release all those unlawfully and arbitrarily detained, to fully respect their right to a fair trial, and to provide information on the whereabouts of disappeared persons and access to justice for family members. Excellencies, fear of arbitrary arrest and incomunicado detention curtail freedom of expression, leaving no room for dissent or criticism. There are still no privately owned media outlets, with the government controlling their Eritrean TV channel, radio stations, and written press. This means, by a number of assessments and indices of freedom of speech, Eritrea continues to rank amongst the least free of all countries in the world. Eritreans continue to be subjected to indefinite military national service. Conscripts are drafted for an open-ended duration of service beyond the 18 months provided by law, often in abusive conditions, including through the use of torture, sexual violence, and forced labor. Those who attempt to desert military service, often after years of conscription, are subjected to detention and punishment, often amounting to torture. Given the abuses that occur in the context of national service, the idea that this system is instrumental in addressing youth unemployment is abhorrent. Excellencies, Eritrea's constitution of 1997 has never been in full force, and we urge the government to implement it without delay. Further, the government must introduce serious efforts to address impunity and hold those responsible for past and ongoing human rights violations to account. During its second universal periodic review in February 2014, Eritrea made important commitments, and we urge the government to keep those commitments. We further note that without advance in human rights progress, there will continue to be fueled a steady stream of asylum seekers from Eritrea. I also wish you to be aware that Eritrea asylum seekers' protection criteria remain unaltered since 2011. Some six years later, in June 2017, the Special Rapporteur advised this Council that there can be no sustainable solution to refugee outflows until the government complies with its human rights obligation. And in that spirit, I reiterate our call for the government to cooperate with the mandate of the Special Rapporteur. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Sheila Keterud has the floor, Special Rapporteur on the Situation of Human Rights in Eritrea.
Madam Vice President, fellow panelists, distinguished delegates, and ladies and gentlemen, now while participating in this enhanced interactive dialogue, I intend to provide an update on the current situation of human rights in Eritrea. My monitoring of the current situation shows that the patterns of human rights violations identified by both my mandate and that of the Commission of Inquiry on Human Rights in Eritrea continue unabated. I will focus on the right to life, the right to liberty and security of the person, freedom from arbitrary arrest and detention, freedom of expression, assembly and association, and freedom of religious belief, to name but this ones. When I addressed the Third Committee of the General Assembly in October 2017, I pointed out that Eritrea continued to keep people in custody until death. Following the recent events in the Accra neighborhood of Asmara, another name has been added to the long list of known and unknown individuals who die while in the custody of the Eritrean government. On Saturday, 3rd March, the family of Haji Musa Mohammed Noor, aged 93, received information that the respected elder and former freedom fighter died while in jail. He had been arbitrarily arrested and detained for almost four months. Reports reaching me from credible sources point to the arrest of hundreds of people, mainly men, and some of them young boys, as young as 13 years after the burial of Haji Musa. The arrests continue. The genesis of this continuing series of breaches, as the Deputy High Commissioner has said, is repression. So I don't need to go into the full details, but however, Haji Musa was put in jail in October 2013 and afforded no due process. Members of the management committee, including Haji Musa and other school officials, were arrested because they declined implementing the orders of the government relating to the administration of the Aldea Private Secondary School located in the Accra neighborhood. They resisted the imposition of restrictions, including banning Muslim girls attending the school from wearing the veil or the hijab, the discontinuation of religious teachings, as well as the introduction of co-education. Several people were arrested. The numbers are difficult to quantify, but the arrests happened during the protests against the arrest of school officials, and these governments imposed restrictions. Armed law officers violently dispersed the crowd, wielding truncheons and firing gunshots in the air. Now, this was the first wave of arrests. After the burial of Haji Musa on Saturday, the fourth, the second wave of mass arrests started. I continue to receive reports of these arrests, including of children. The government of Eritrea implemented its notorious and repeatedly documented modus operandi once more: mass arrests to instill fear, those in custody are not allowed to exercise their rights to due process, to challenge the legality of their detention. Family members have not received any formal notification of the arrest and detention of their loved ones. However, some family members have been able to find out where their loved ones were and to bring food and other clothes, for example. Now, freedom of religion. Both followers of recognized and unrecognized religions continue to be targeted for their religious beliefs. The Minor Seminary School in Asmara, which provides religious education to aspiring priests and nuns of the Catholic Church, was closed in October 2017. Two representatives of the school, a priest and a nun, were arrested and detained for refusing to hand over the list of students enrolled at the school. Six health clinics belonging to the run by the Catholic Church across the country have also been closed. The list is long, about 300 businesses have been closed. I have lots of other information which I'll be happy to impart during the interactive dialogue.
Thank you very much, and I now give the floor to Mr. Remi Noguilumbo, African Commissioner on Human and People's Rights. Sir, you have the floor.
Madam Vice President du Conseil, chers panelistes, avant toute chose permettez-moi de remercier le Président du Conseil des Droits de l'Homme, Son Excellence Voi Slav Sukh, pour l'invitation à adresser la Commission Africaine de Droits de l'Homme et des Peuples à travers son courrier du 8 février 2018. Permettez-moi également de vous adresser les salutations chaleureuses de Madame Swayat Amahiga, Présidente de cette Commission, qui m'a demandé d'apporter à cette prestigieuse tribune un message de renforcement de collaboration, d'échanges, et des liens d'entente entre tous les mécanismes onisiens de monitoring des droits de l'homme et les différents mécanismes situés par la Charte Africaine de Droits de l'Homme et des Peuples, ainsi que les différents protocoles y rattachés. Je prends la parole cet après-midi au nom d'une de mes collègues empêchées, Madame Jamesina King, qui est la rapporteur pays en charge de l'Eritra. La situation des droits de l'homme en Éritra est extrêmement préoccupante, et l'appel à une mobilisation des énergies afin d'aider le gouvernement de ce pays à respecter ses engagements en vertu de toutes les conventions internationales des Nations Unies et en vertu de la Charte Africaine de Droits de l'Homme et des Peuples et ses protocoles. C'est depuis longtemps que ce pays est en proie à des violations des droits fondamentaux. Consciente de cette situation, la Commission avait demandé au gouvernement de Tchopi et d'Éritra d'arrêter les hostilités, de renoncer à la pratique vindicative de déportation, forcer, de respecter l'accord et cesser le fait de faire les efforts et qui, en vue de donner une chance de succès à une résolution paisible du conflit. Par la suite, six années plus tard, la Commission Africaine de Droits de l'Homme et des Peuples s'était à nouveau penchée sur le sujet, en rappelant notamment des atteintes à la liberté d'opinion et des réunions au droit à un procès équitable. Elle avait aussi indiqué être profondément préoccupée par les arrestations arbitraires et la poursuite des détentions sans jugement d'anciens ministres et des responsables du gouvernement, des membres de groupes d'opposition, des journalistes et des représentants des médias. La Commission avait demandé au gouvernement d'Éritra à se conformer à ses obligations aux termes de l'acte constitutif de l'Union Africaine et de la Charte Africaine de Droits de l'Homme et des Peuples, ainsi que des autres instruments pertinents auxquels l'Eritra est partie. De même, elle avait exhorté le gouvernement de ce pays à respecter les instruments internationaux et régionaux qu'il a ratifiés, notamment la Charte Africaine de Droits de l'Homme et des Peuples, le Pacte international relatif aux droits civils et politiques, le Pacte international relatif aux droits économiques, sociaux et culturels, et à coopérer avec la Commission Africaine de Droits de l'Homme et des Peuples. Dans une autre résolution, 270, sur la situation des droits de l'homme en Afrique, la Commission avait déclaré être profondément préoccupée par la situation en Éritra, caractérisée par de nombreux cas d'arrestations arbitraires et des détentions prolongées, des procès d'anciens ministres, des membres des corps de sécurité, des membres des parties d'opposition, des journalistes et autres membres du personnel des médias, en violation des dispositions de la Charte Africaine de Droits de l'Homme et des Peuples. Au niveau de l'Organisation des Nations Unies, le Conseil des Droits de l'Homme avait adopté la Résolution 35 qui est connue au cours de sa 35e session, et avait décidé qu'il soit tenu un dialogue renforcé sur la situation de droits de l'homme à sa 37e session, à laquelle la Commission Africaine est partie prenante. Cette résolution avait également demandé au gouvernement éritraien, au point huit, de coopérer avec tous les mécanismes régionaux relatifs aux droits de l'homme. La Commission se réjouisse pendant que le gouvernement éritraien, que dirige son Excellence le Président Issayas Afewerki, est soumis depuis le 22 février 2018 le premier rapport initial au titre de la Charte Africaine de Droits de l'Homme et des Peuples, que le public peut consulter sur le site de la Commission Africaine. Ce rapport sera examiné au cours de la 62e session ordinaire que la Commission tiendra en Mauritanie du 25 avril au 9 mai 2018. Il va couvrir la période de 17 ans, soit de 1999 à 2016. Ce sera une occasion de passer en revue la situation générale en rapport avec le respect des droits de l'homme en ce pays et permettre d'organiser un dialogue constructif avec le gouvernement éritraien. Les recommandations pertinentes qui en découleront permettront, nous l'espérons, de faire un pas vers la bonne direction. Ce rapport a apparemment été rédigé en concertation avec les organisations de la société civile éritraenne, ainsi que le renseigne son paragraphe deux. Il couvre aussi bien les droits civils et politiques, les droits économiques, sociaux et culturels, ainsi que le droit au développement. Il intègre le droit collectif à la paix et à la sécurité internationale. En conclusion, le hasard a fait que c'est souvent dans un intervalle de six ans que les organes chargés de moniter les droits fondamentaux viennent ochiver de ce pays pour le sortir de sa position inconfortable en matière de droits de l'homme. La Commission Africaine souhaite remercier le Conseil pour cette invitation, et s'émerger à la disposition des représentants de diverses delegations pour échanger avec eux sous les voies et moyens d'aider ce pays à appliquer de manière satisfaisante les dispositions immanentes des diverses conventions internationales auxquelles il a librement et volontairement adhéré. Je vous remercie.
Merci, messieurs. And I have to remind you that the list of speakers is now closed, and I now give the floor to Ms. Veronica Almedon, Information Forum for Eritrea. You have the floor, madam.
Thank you, Miss Vice President. Dear Madam Deputy High Commissioner, excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, it is often raised by the Eritrean delegation that the process of nation building is in the heart of the government's mission. As its name indicates, nation building is obviously not the project of a few. It ordinarily embraces the contribution of every single individual in the society. Just in the same way as the human body operates, every organ has its distinctive function, and it would be senseless to assume that one single organ, like the heart, for example, could take over the functions of the lungs or the kidney. Mrs. Vice President, dear delegates, dear excellencies, allow me to now go back to discussing Eritrea. PFDJ, which is a political party driven by its very distinctive ideology, has been acting as though it could represent all the functions and all the demographic groups that exist in the Eritrean society, from young to old, from the private sector to the public sector, from the judiciary to the legislative to the executive branch, and to the army, from education to religion to information, etc., etc. Such brutal dominion over all aspects of a given society would profoundly hurt a population and its cohesion, and this is one of the vicious cycles of oppression in which the Eritrean society has been trapped in. So far, exile has been their only safeguard, given the fact that, given the lack of robust and effective governance mechanisms at national level as well as continental level. For the past five years, I've had the chance to spend a considerable amount of time with unaccompanied Eritrean minors, who live in Geneva and other areas of Switzerland. From the moment I began this work in 2013 till today, five years later, not much has changed positively. It has certainly not been the same narrative upheld by the Eritrean government, but as we say, the story as recounted by the lion is not going to be told in the same way as the one told by the gazelle. The fear of being subjected to ill-treatments is a recurrent threat that I hear when I ask Eritrean teenagers why they left Eritrea. Also, the fact that the government of Eritrea imposes one single, very formatted model to a population of 4 million people is not only objectively unsustainable because it increases popularization, but also because it profoundly goes against the natural rights of every individual to be the sole architect of their destiny, dreams, and aspirations. One would think that indefinite national military service, a hugely rights-restricted measure, would at least yield a highly lucrative or results-oriented purpose. However, the sacrifice of national service that is delivered by thousands of Eritrean youths is not even being translated into gratifying results that benefit the nation. Quite contrary, the infrastructure is deteriorating, as electricity shortage is common, even in places like hospitals. So my question to Mr. Ambassador, who is not here, I regret to see an empty chair, my question is, according to your party and its views, what effective value does this model of society bring to Eritrea? What sustainable benefit can Eritrea gain from this system of governance when we see a clear pattern of exile over the years, when we see disgraceful deals made to exchange your nationals in exchange of pecuniary gains? What we observe with the Eritrean government is lack of fulfillment of its obligations, grave violations of the Constitution or inertia when it comes to internal issues with the government of Eritrea. Indeed, there has not been any redressment in nearly 17 years of political oppression, no initiation of a dialogue with its civil society, no creation of at least a few economic incentives to keep the youth at home. This lack of commitment to the supreme rule of law, to public service, and to the Eritrean population is not acceptable. The deliberate institutional disarray in favor of the politics of the belly is not acceptable. Treating Eritrean soul as a private property by extracting gold and selling the port of Asseb for foreign entities without the consent of the Eritrean people, notwithstanding the fact that the nature of this transaction is immoral and unethical, all this is not acceptable. These arbitrary and irresponsible decisions do not reflect the general willingness of the Eritrean society. Rather, it is brutally forced upon them, and the world sees it. So no one should be surprised of such country-specific mandate, which moreover remains the sole remedy for Eritrean victims and human rights defenders to be heard. So this platform is necessary. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and I'll give the floor to Pamela Delargy. You have the floor.
Thank you. I want to say a few words this morning about Eritreans who are outside of Eritrea. And I think in the deliberations on human rights in Eritrea, there has not been quite enough discussion about the protection needs of Eritreans who are outside. We know that Eritreans outside represent a significant proportion of the population. We know, sitting in Europe, that Eritreans have represented a significant proportion of those arriving across the Mediterranean. Some of us know the horrible stories of the abduction and torture of Eritrean refugees in the Sinai from 2010 to 2014, where people who had sought asylum in Sudan were taken by smugglers and traffickers to the Sinai, burned, raped, organs harvested, etc., some of whom made it safely to Israel, where they now also face a protection problem and possible deportation. I think there are not a group in the world that have faced such a variety of protection challenges at Eritreans who have left Eritrea. We have to look around. People have gone to all the neighboring countries and have faced many different issues: lack of livelihoods, lack of access to health services, in many cases trafficking, smuggling, abduction, extortion. There are thousands of Eritrean families in this world who have received that frightening call from an abductor saying, "We have your relative. We are torturing them. You must give $2,000, or $10,000, or $20,000 dollars to have them freed." This is a story which has gone largely unreported in the international media. If we look today at the situation of refugees and migrants in Libya, we find that Eritreans are the second-largest group of refugees in Libya, who are suffering in detention centers, abducted sometimes by Islamic State, you've probably seen some of the coverage of that, including some who are actually executed on the beach in Libya. There are Eritrean refugees who sought refuge in Yemen, who are in the midst of the bombs, the closing of schools, the loss of housing, the loss of education, the loss of access to any health care, and yet have no way to go out safely. The growing number of unaccompanied children in Europe and in Egypt has a large proportion of Eritrean refugees in it. In fact, of the over 3,000 unaccompanied children and separated minors who arrived in Egypt last year, over half of them were Eritrean, mostly ages 14 to 17, but some as young as four. In the work that I did with the Special Representative on Migration in Calais in France, we found Eritreans aged 12, aged 13, aged 14, boys and girls, who had come, some at the urging of their families and some without the knowledge of their families. The condition that these refugees are facing all over the world, and I say "the world" because they are today sitting in Mexico in detention centers, at least three dozen Eritrean refugees. The conditions that they are facing in terms of their physical health, their mental health, their family separation are truly deplorable, and I think it's a human rights situation that we cannot neglect when we talk about Eritrea. They arrive in bad shape, physically, psychologically, they are isolated, and yet sometimes the question is asked is, well, why did they leave exactly? pregunta se hace es: bueno, ¿por qué se fueron exactamente? ¿Fueron por razones que vienen estrictamente bajo la Convención Refugiada para los Refugiados en 1951? Creo que cuando miramos esto como activistas de derechos humanos y practicantes, cualquier mezcla de motivaciones de irse no debería comprometer el derecho a la protección y a los derechos humanos que enfrentan los refugiados y migrantes. Gracias.
Gracias. Como es la práctica en nuestra discusión, ahora empezaremos escuchando la delegación del país afectado, pero puedo ver que no están en la sala. Así que ahora invito a las delegaciones interesadas a hacer preguntas a los presentadores y a hacer comentarios sobre sus declaraciones. Antes de dar el plazo al primer orador de la lista, me gustaría recordaros que el límite de tiempo de oración es dos minutos para todos hoy. Y ahora le doy el plazo al distinguido representante de la Unión Europea. Tienes el plazo.
Muchas gracias, señora vicepresidenta. La Unión Europea agradece al representante especial, el oficio del alto comisionado y los oradores distinguidos por sus presentaciones. Remanemos profundamente preocupados por la situación de derechos humanos en Eritrea. Perdemos la falta de medidas sustanciales hasta ahora para abordar áreas destacadas por las resoluciones de la HRC, el representante especial y la antigua comisión de investigación. Nos alegramos de algunos desarrollos positivos, incluyendo la renueva de la participación de los actores internacionales, como se ve con las visitas continuas por el personal del OCHR. También nos alegramos de la disposición de Eritrea a participar en diálogos sobre cuestiones de derechos humanos con otros países. Le pedimos al gobierno cooperar plenamente con los mecanismos de la ONU, en particular con el representante especial. También animamos a Eritrea a cooperar plenamente con el oficio del alto comisionado y a considerar el establecimiento de un oficio del OCHR en Eritrea. Llamamos a Eritrea a llevar adelante reformas institucionales y legales sustanciales para asegurar el respeto a los derechos humanos y las libertades fundamentales y el régimen de la ley, para terminar la práctica de detención arbitraria, para trabajar hacia el fin de la indefinida servir militar obligatorio, para tomar medidas concretas para luchar contra la impunidad y para implementar las recomendaciones de UPR de segundo ciclo aceptadas. En este sentido, nos alegramos de la publicación del informe medio-termal de UPR de Eritrea. También le pedimos al gobierno respetar la libertad de la religión o de la creencia y los derechos de propiedad, incluidos aquellos de comunidades extranjeras. La Unión Europea querría preguntar al representante especial su opinión sobre el tendimiento general respecto a los derechos humanos en Eritrea. Gracias.
Gracias. Ahora Norway tiene el plazo.
Gracias, señora vicepresidenta. Norway quiere agradecer al representante especial una vez más por sus esfuerzos. Como amigo permanente de Eritrea, nos preocupamos profundamente por los informes de graves violaciones de derechos humanos en el país. Mantener los derechos humanos es una parte integral de los deberes del gobierno hacia sus ciudadanos, y es por eso vital garantizar la transparencia en cuanto a progreso y en áreas donde aún se necesitan mejoras. Los datos y estadísticas confiables son esenciales para verificar el estado de derechos humanos de Eritrea. Nos alegramos del compromiso hecho por el gobierno de Eritrea para colaborar en la implementación de las recomendaciones de UPR aceptadas. Sin embargo, para fortalecer la responsabilidad y la implementación de las obligaciones de derechos humanos, le pedimos a Eritrea que permita a expertos de la ONU acceder al país. Cooperación con representantes de procedimientos especiales, incluidos aquellos con mandatos temáticos y específicos de país, es crucial para complementar el proceso de UPR. Y nos gustaría mucho escuchar los puntos de vista del panel sobre cómo cooperar con Eritrea para facilitar visitas futuras de este tipo. Norway reconoce que ha habido algunos mejoravimientos en los derechos humanos en el país. Focar en la igualdad de género y luchar contra prácticas malvadas es recomendable. Sin embargo, siguen varios retos. Mucho todavía debe hacerse, entre ellos, establecer y garantizar el respeto al régimen de la ley. strongly animamos a Eritrea a continuar su cooperación con el equipo de país de la ONU y del OCHR para fortalecer la administración de la justicia. Y sería interesante escuchar sus puntos de vista desde el panel sobre cómo mover esta agenda. Apreciamos la disposición del gobierno de Eritrea a participar en diálogos bilaterales sobre los derechos humanos, aunque desearíamos su falta de presencia aquí hoy. También animamos a Eritrea a cooperar fuertemente con la ONU en la construcción de capacidad y reformas para lograr los STGs, incluyendo objetivos de derechos humanos. Y Norway volverá a reiterar su recomendación de que Eritrea deba invitar al OCHR a establecer un oficio en el país. Gracias.
Gracias. Ahora Suiza tiene el plazo.
Madam vicepresidenta, la Sueca agradece el informe especial, el alto comisario adjunto y los otros participantes por sus presentaciones. La Sueca se preocupa por la situación de los derechos de hombre en Eritrea y del falta de información verificable a disposición debido a la falta de acceso libre y independiente al país. Ella lamenta la falta de Eritrea hoy y pide tomar inmediatamente medidas concretas para dar acceso al país y mejorar la situación de los derechos de hombre. Mi delegación agradece la decisión de Eritrea de participar activamente para asegurar el seguimiento de las recomendaciones del examen periódico universal, así como la organización de un taller sobre la administración de la justicia con el alto comisario de derechos de hombre y la equipo de la ONU en Asmara en octubre de 2007. También aprecia que Eritrea esté dispuesta a discutir cuestiones de derechos de hombre bilateralmente. Sin embargo, pide que Eritrea vaya más lejos. En particular, ella anima a reforzar duramente su colaboración con el alto comisario de derechos de hombre, invitándolo a establecer un bureau en el país y a cooperar con todos los mecanismos de este consejo, especialmente las procedencias especiales. La Sueca está dispuesta a seguir el diálogo y su cooperación con las agencias y mecanismos onusianos, así como con Eritrea, para mejorar la situación de los derechos de hombre en el país. La Sueca quiere hacer dos preguntas. Primero, el taller de derechos de hombre sobre la administración de la justicia en Asmara se ha tenido ya hace varios meses. ¿Cuáles son vuestras recomendaciones prioritarias de seguimiento y proyectos en este ámbito? De segundo lugar, la colaboración de Eritrea con los mecanismos onusianos de protección de los derechos de hombre es a animar. ¿Qué apoyo específico el alto comisario de derechos de hombre ofrece a Eritrea para reforzar sus capacidades para la preparación de informes destinados a los organismos de tratamiento? Les gracias.
Gracias, madame. Le doy el plazo a Estados Unidos.
Gracias, señor representante especial. Apreciamos sus actualizaciones sobre el reciente paso de Musa Mohammed Noor y la situación en el vecindario de Akara. Valoramos su opinión sobre la situación de derechos humanos en Eritrea y su mandato de informar a este Consejo. Y reiteramos nuestro deseo del gobierno eritreo a cooperar con usted y con la comunidad internacional al permitir acceso para evaluar la situación dentro del país de primera mano. Llamamos al gobierno eritreo a implementar y cumplir con sus obligaciones internacionales al asegurar un tribunal independiente y transparente, mejorar las condiciones de detención y liberar a individuos arbitrariamente detenidos, incluidos prisioneros políticos, periodistas y miembros de grupos religiosos, censurados por sus creencias. Entre nuestras preocupaciones más serias está la naturaleza indefinida de la obligatoria de servicio nacional de Eritrea. Aunque los eritreanos han dado garantías previas de que el servicio nacional es limitado a 18 meses, los cuentas indican que el gobierno rutinariamente requiere que los individuos sirvan por períodos más largos. Esto priva a la gente joven de la oportunidad de perseguir otras carreras y los anima a dejar el país a alto riesgo de sus vidas. También nos preocupan los informes del representante especial sobre cómo el gobierno está ejerciendo más control sobre los cuatro grupos religiosos que oficialmente reconoce, como se ve con su reciente cierre en las escuelas islámicas y católicas y instituciones y la continua detención de Patriarch Antonio por protestar contra la interferencia del gobierno en asuntos de iglesia. Además, miembros de los grupos religiosos no reconocidos, especialmente cristianos evangélicos y testigos de Jehová, reportan que continúan enfrentándose a la detención arbitraria, tortura y otras formas de trato malo, y están forzados a hacer garantías de no continuar practicando religiones no reconocidas como condición de liberación. En conclusión, quiero señalar que reconocemos y alegramos los esfuerzos de Eritrea para reengajar con la comunidad internacional. El progreso requerirá que todos los lados aborde seriamente los preocupados históricos que han resultado en la relativa isolación de Eritrea. Eritrea tiene la oportunidad de señalar su seriedad a la comunidad internacional al honestamente contando y abordando los preocupados de derechos humanos que se han mantenido, un paso que sería un éxito para el gobierno de Eritrea y sus ciudadanos. Gracias. Pregunta. Señor representante especial, el gobierno eritreo ha estado enviando señales de que está más abierto a la participación internacional que lo ha sido en el pasado. Si este es el caso, ¿cómo podría la comunidad internacional usar una abertura en la medida de efecto como oportunidad para mejorar la situación de derechos humanos? Gracias.
Gracias. Ahora Australia tiene el plazo.
Madam vicepresidenta, Australia acepta la mayor participación del gobierno de Eritrea con la comunidad internacional y su compromiso para implementar las recomendaciones universales de revisión periódica de Eritrea. Australia aprecia al representante especial en los esfuerzos de Eritrea. Encorajamos al gobierno de Eritrea a aumentar la cooperación con el mandato del representante especial y a implementar las recomendaciones del informe de investigación de la Comisión de Investigación de mayo de 2016. Australia reitera los preocupados del representante especial, incluidos informes de violencia sexual y basada en género. Madam vicepresidenta, nos perturba los hallazgos de la Comisión de Investigación de los informes de violaciones de derechos humanos, incluidos el uso arbitrario y la duración abierta de servicio militar, la ausencia de procesos judiciales, desapariciones, detención indefinida y el uso de tortura. Llamamos al gobierno de Eritrea a cooperar con los mecanismos de derechos humanos de la ONU puestos en place para ayudarlo a abordar los preocupados de derechos humanos y a atacar la impunidad en relación con perpetradores de violaciones de derechos humanos. Australia anima a Eritrea a ampliar su espacio democrático, incluidos con respecto a la libertad de expresión. Le pedimos al gobierno de Eritrea a implementar la Constitución de 1997 y a respetar los tratados de derechos humanos a los que es partido. Gracias.
Gracias. Le cedo la palabra a la Francia.
Gracias, madame vicepresidenta. La Francia agradece la declaración de la Unión Europea y agradece al representante especial sobre la situación de los derechos de hombre en Eritrea por su exposición. La Francia se preocupa profundamente por la situación de los derechos de hombre en Eritrea. Desploramos la insuficiencia de medidas tomadas a este día por las autoridades eritreanas para poner en marcha las recomendaciones del representante especial, como formuladas por este consejo en sus anteriores resoluciones. Esta situación es aún más preocupante que la Comisión de Investigación concluye que ciertas violaciones de derechos de hombre son sistémicas y generalizadas y son constitutivas de crímenes contra la humanidad. Exhortamos a las autoridades eritreanas a mejorar la situación de los derechos de hombre y las libertades fundamentales en el país, y, entre otros, en materia de derechos civiles y políticos y de respeto al Estado de derechos, conforme a las recomendaciones dirigidas durante su examen periódico universal. La Francia anima a las autoridades eritreanas a seguir el diálogo, participar con el alto comisario de derechos de hombre y hacer que este diálogo se traduzca por avances efectivas en materia de derechos de hombre. La cooperación con los mecanismos de derechos de hombres de los Estados Unidos es la ocasión para que las autoridades presenten su punto de vista y identifiquen pistas de acción concretas. En esta perspectiva, continuamos animando a Eritrea a analizar la creación de un local de alto comisario. También es esencial que Eritrea cooperen con el representante especial, y, entre otros, autorizando el acceso a su territorio. Les gracias.
Gracias. El siguiente orador es la delegación de China, por favor. El siguiente orador es Grecia, por favor.
Gracias, señora vicepresidenta. Grecia se alienta con una declaración entregada por la Unión Europea. Grecia querría agradecer al representante especial, la señora Kitharou, y el oficio del alto comisionado por su excelente y alta calidad de trabajo. Expresamos nuestro preocupación por la situación de derechos humanos en Eritrea. Problemas levantados por anteriores resoluciones de la HRC, el representante especial y la antigua comisión de investigación han aún que se aborde de manera sustancial. Mientras que algunos desarrollos positivos deben ser notados en cuanto al engagement limitado y renovado del país con la ONU, el país aún ha demostrado su voluntad de abordar la comunidad internacional en algunos de los graves violaciones de derechos humanos que enfrenta. Especialmente nos gustaría expresar nuestro preocupación respecto a la no implementación de las recomendaciones de la resolución de la HRC 3535. Le pedimos al gobierno respetar el mandato del representante especial y otorgarle toda su poder y acceso a la país. Llamamos a la delegación del gobierno de Eritrea a asegurar el respeto a los derechos humanos y las libertades fundamentales y el régimen de la ley, así como terminar la práctica de detención arbitraria y detención sin proceso debido. También le pedimos al gobierno de Eritrea a respetar la libertad de la religión o la creencia y los derechos de propiedad, incluidos aquellos de comunidades extranjeras en el país. Finalmente, Grecia querría recordar que el año pasado la propiedad real de la comunidad griega en Asmara, que aloja al oficial general honorable de Grecia, fue confiscada por las autoridades eritreanas. Esto constituye una violación clara de la ley internacional en la Convención de Viena sobre relaciones consulares de 1963. Le pedimos al gobierno de Eritrea a devolver este real estate a sus propietarios legales. Gracias.
Gracias. Le doy el plazo a la delegación de Venezuela, por favor.
Gracias, señora vicepresidenta. Venezuela no apoya y se opondrá a las iniciativas dirigidas específicamente contra los países en desarrollo y más aún cuando estos mandatos no gozan de la aceptación del estado concernido. El EPU es el mecanismo idóneo para promover la cooperación internacional en derechos humanos mediante un diálogo entre iguales y sin politización. En ese sentido, Eritrea ha cooperado con este consejo y sus mecanismos en la protección de los derechos humanos de sus ciudadanos. El país ha completado dos revisiones ante el examen periódico universal. La comunidad de naciones debe brindar apoyo para el cumplimiento de las recomendaciones aceptadas por Eritrea. Los mandatos contra países vulneran los principios de respeto a la integridad, soberanía y no injerencia en los asuntos internos de los estados recogidos en la Carta de las Naciones Unidas. Reiteramos una vez más la imperiosa necesidad de que este consejo cumpla con su mandato de proteger los derechos humanos sobre la base del diálogo genuino y la cooperación con estricto apego al principio de universalidad y sin apelar a la coacción, los dobles raseros y la politización mediante la imposición de mandatos contra países. Muchas gracias, señora vicepresidenta.
Gracias. El siguiente orador es Sudán, por favor.
Gracias, señora vicepresidenta. La delegación de Sudán ha seguido cuidadosamente el update oral del representante especial en Eritrea y querría hacer las siguientes remarques. Sudán subraya los principios de derechos humanos y la realidad fundamental y el progreso en Eritrea, incluidos el emergente engagement e intervención internacional. Sudán cree que la forma óptima de promover y proteger los derechos humanos es promoviendo diálogo genuino y cooperación, garantizando non-selectividad, imparcialidad, objetividad y de politización adecuadas y estándares, así como aumentar la capacidad del estado en forma de asistencia técnica. Madam vicepresidenta, nos mantendremos confiados en que el consentimiento y la cooperación entre el poseedor del mandato y el país afectado representan la única alternativa a lograr progreso tangible en el terreno y que no se podría lograr un resultado positivo en la ausencia de diálogo y respeto mutuo. En conclusión, señora vicepresidenta, mi delegación anima a Eritrea a continuar su participación con la comunidad internacional y creemos que el apoyo y asistencia técnica deberían proporcionarse a Eritrea. Gracias, señora vicepresidenta.
Gracias. Le doy el plazo a Jibuti, su excelencia.
Gracias, señora vicepresidenta. Jibuti agradece a todos los panelistas y los agradece por su presentación agradable que abordó un área de cuestiones relacionadas con uno o varios aspectos de violaciones de derechos humanos que están ocurriendo en Eritrea. Jibuti espera que nuestro intercambio hoy sea una oportunidad para un diálogo constructivo y desearía desaparecer de Eritrea. Madam deputada alta comisionada, mi delegación comenta el continuo esfuerzo del oficial del alto comisionado en la participación con las autoridades eritreanas para mejorar la situación de los derechos humanos en el país. Mi delegación desploró el descanso de progreso en muchos temas relacionados con los derechos humanos, en particular los que se refieren a las resoluciones del Consejo de Derechos Humanos. Mi delegación anima a usted a continuar su esfuerzo en la participación con el gobierno eritreo. Madam representante especial, es lamentable que el gobierno de Eritrea continúe rechazando su mandato, por lo tanto, fallando en cumplir sus obligaciones internacionales al no respetar las relevantes resoluciones de los organismos de la ONU, incluidas las de el Consejo de Derechos Humanos. Las condiciones de detención inhumanas deberían ser una cuestión de preocupación para el Consejo, particularmente cuando ha llevado a la muerte de prisioneros, incluidos prisioneros políticos, como se reportó hoy. La práctica continua de detención incomunicada pone gran preocupación en nuestra delegación, que se preocupará profundamente por la vida de los 13 restantes de Jibuti. which remains deeply preoccupied about the fate of the thirteen remaining Jibusan prisoners detained in such conditions in Eritrea since 2008. Jibuti reiterates its concern about the findings of the Commission of Inquiry on the situation of human rights in Eritrea on the reasonable grounds to believe that crimes against humanity have been committed since 1991. Madam Vice President, the perpetual argument of politicization, selectivity, and stigmatization, as well as non-cooperation and the systematic denial approach adopted by Eritrea cannot hide the sad facts and hardship of Eritreans trying to escape drastic and dire human rights abuses. My delegation urges Eritrea once more to engage with all UN mandate holders, relevant stakeholders, such as the African Union, including the civil society, to guarantee and improve its respect of international human rights and humanitarian law on its soul and to opt rather for an enhanced genuine dialogue. Finally, my delegation would like to hear from the panelists on how member states could assist better the special rapporteur in her mandate and all efforts to generate an effective dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me remind all speakers, please stick to the time limit. I give the floor now to United Kingdom of Great Britain and Northern Ireland.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The United Kingdom would like to thank the special rapporteur for her work over the duration of the mandate. The United Kingdom shares concerns highlighted by the special rapporteur on the human rights situation in Eritrea. We are particularly concerned by the arbitrary detention of people practicing or involved in teaching certain faiths. This stands in contrast to the freedom to worship that the majority of Eritreans enjoy. We welcome Eritrea’s continued engagement with the Office of the High Commissioner for Human Rights and the work by the United Nations Development Programme in taking forward the recommendations of the 2014 Universal Periodic Review. These are welcome indications that the government of Eritrea is prepared to engage in efforts to improve the human rights situation, and we look forward to concrete progress on implementation. We would like to ask the special rapporteur for her views on other potential and emerging areas for human rights cooperation, aside from the UPR process. The United Kingdom continues to call on the government of Eritrea to honour all of its international human rights obligations and to cooperate with all aspects of the UN human rights system. The UK continues to encourage the government of Eritrea to allow the UN Special Rapporteur on Human Rights in Eritrea access to the country. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Madam. I give the floor to Ireland, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Ireland fully aligns itself to the statement of the EU. We remain concerned by the human rights situation in Eritrea and strongly urge the Eritrean authorities to take action, in particular in the areas highlighted by the special rapporteur, the former Commission of Inquiry, and other human rights bodies. We welcome and encourage renewed engagement by Eritrea with the international community. However, we reiterate our call for the government of Eritrea to enact the political and legal reforms required to end human rights violations, end impunity, and ensure accountability for past violations. Young men and women continue risking their lives to flee from Eritrea. Our international response to displacement, human trafficking, and smuggling from Eritrea cannot be institutionally detached from the political and economic context which has created conditions leading to flight. We stress therefore that cooperation and engagement between Eritrea and the international community is essential to improving the lives of Eritrean citizens, and we echo the calls made by the EU and others for Eritrea to cooperate fully with relevant international actors and with the special rapporteur and other human rights mechanisms through respecting their mandates and granting access to and around the country. This will allow a comprehensive assessment of the human rights situation on the ground in cooperation with the international community and help to improve the lives of Eritrea citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to Cuba, please.
Gracias, señora presidenta. Para Cuba, la cooperación internacional, el diálogo y el intercambio respetuoso entre todos los países sobre la base de respeto a los principios de la Carta de la ONU constituyen las vías efectivas para cumplir el propósito de cuadear al logro de estándares superiores de promoción y protección de los derechos humanos. Abogamos por agotar todos los medios posibles dentro del ámbito del Consejo de Derechos Humanos para lograr que se preste atención a las cuestiones que constituyen preocupaciones de la comunidad internacional o que pueden constituir retos para uno o varios países en lo relativo a la existencia de un entorno propicio para el ejercicio de los derechos humanos. No creemos que los enfoques punitivos ni las sanciones puedan colocarnos más cerca de alcanzar dichos objetivos. Exhortamos a que se confiera una nueva oportunidad a la cooperación, que se propice un involucramiento directo de las organizaciones regionales y subregionales africanas en la atención a las cuestiones que constituyen objeto de preocupación y en la búsqueda de soluciones efectivas que incluyan a las autoridades eritreas, atiendan sus preocupaciones, y logren el propósito de ayudar al pueblo eritreo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. We shall now turn to our list of speakers for national human rights institutions and non-governmental organizations, and I give the floor to International Fellowship of Reconciliation, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The government of Eritrea wants to present an image of a modern, progressive, and peaceful Eritrea. However, all forms of repression of Eritrean citizens by their own government continue unabated. Over 10,000 prisoners of conscience have been detained in over 350 prisons across Eritrea under harsh conditions and without due legal process. Security forces fire shows in the capital in response to a student protest in October. The students were protesting the arrest of their community school board president Hajimusa Mohammed Noor. After four months incommunicado detention, Hajimusa died in detention on 1st of March. The government arrested over 1,000 mourners at his funeral, and they are still detained incommunicado. Salomon Hafthom, a former head of Eritrean telecommunications, died after 14 years in prison without access to lawyer or family visitation. His son, who lives in Germany, is present at this council today. Arrests of Christians multiplied in 2017. At least 400 remain in prison without charge or trial, many for over 10 years. With no time limit on the national service, it is no wonder that every Eritrean who can tries to leave, making Eritrea one of the countries producing the highest numbers of refugees. The repression of the private sector has worsened. The government-limited cash withdrawals from banks and depositors have lost control of their own personal and business funds. The regime wants an economy that is totally controlled by its party. Madam Vice President, does the panel agree that there have been no verifiable human rights changes on the ground in Eritrea? We recommend that the Human Rights Council must renew the mandate of the special rapporteur at a minimum and look for new opportunities to push for improvements in Eritrea. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Article 19, International Center Against Censorship, please.
Madam Vice President, Article 19 regrets that the situation for freedom of expression has not improved since the publication of the Commission of Inquiry’s findings in 2016 on the special rapporteur’s report last year. It remains true, as the Commission found, that the denial of freedom of expression, assembly, and association rights remains systematically entrenched in Eritrea. We further regret that the government of Eritrea has chosen not to engage in this enhanced interactive dialogue, in particular to respond to the concerns of civil society. We condemn the recent and severe crackdown on those protesting a government decree to close religious schools in Eritrea. This includes alleged use of lethal force against a student protest in Asmara in October and the arbitrary and incommunicado detention of an unknown number of persons, including the chairperson of Aldea Islamic School, who we understand has since died in custody. Since 2001, Eritrea has not had a private media after the arrest of at least 18 journalists and 11 former government officials on the pretext of national security. These detentions have been condemned by two ACHPR decisions, the most recent in 2016 concerning David Isaac. Article 19 notes that there are an estimated 16, nine journalists who have been arbitrarily detained for exercising their right to freedom of expression since 2001 without charge or fair trial. While at least eight journalists are thought to have died in detention, a wall of silence means it is impossible to know how many others remain in prison, where they are, and what their condition is. Government-controlled media is the only type of local media in Eritrea. They act as a mouthpiece of the Ministry of Information. Access to alternative information sources, including online, is limited. We share the special rapporteur’s previously stated concerns that since 2016, new regulations require internet cafes to register customers before they can use the internet. We also note that Eritrea’s sole and government-owned telecommunications provider continues to routinely block online news sources. Internet penetration levels and internet speeds remain woefully slow. This council must renew the special rapporteur’s mandate at its upcoming 38th session and ensure accountability for human rights violations in the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Center for Global Non-Killing.
Madam Vice President, it has been many months since the Commission of Inquiry on Eritrea concluded that crimes against humanity are maybe being perpetrated in Eritrea unabated. We await in anticipation the implementation of the recommendations met and adopted then. Meanwhile, the situation in Eritrea continues to get from bad to worse. In August last year, Faradu Davesai, who was taken to prison during house-to-house raid in July, died in a desert detention camp. She left three young children. Her crime was being a member of an unregistered church. Just over a week ago, we learned that Hajimusa passed away in prison. He was 93, and he spent the last four months of his life in prison. His crime was speaking against a government decision and to keep the school that he was a principal of free from state interference. Finally, I also remember the former foreign minister, Haile Woldensay, who was taken to prison in September 2001 and spent 17 years in unlawful incommunicado detention together with his G11 colleagues. He suffered many illnesses and was finally reported dead last month but unconfirmed. His crime was calling for accountability from the president. In light of all this and more, we welcome the relentless ongoing work of the special rapporteur shedding light into the violations that are occurring in Eritrea, and we look forward to the continuation of the mandate as we move to the crucial implementation of the Commission of Inquiry’s recommendations. I thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Human Rights Watch.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Repeated Human Rights Council resolutions have condemned, in the strongest terms, the systematic, widespread, and gross human rights violations by the Eritrean government. The Council has condemned violations including arbitrary detention, torture, sexual violence, religious suppression, denials of the rights of free expression, and peaceful assembly. The Council has also expressed grave concern over the unlimited conscription of Eritrean citizens and the use of conscripts in forced labour. Council resolutions have urged Eritrea to end these practices and allow international and regional human rights bodies, including special rapporteurs, unhindered access to the country to monitor progress. Unfortunately, the Eritrean government has repeatedly ignored the Council’s resolutions. Little change, if any, has occurred. Prisoners remain jailed without trial indefinitely and sometimes incommunicado. Torture in captivity continues to be a major concern. No independent press is allowed. Endless conscription and its abuses still control the lives of Eritreans, especially the young. The government continues to refuse to give UN and international human rights monitoring bodies access to the country. It has made no effort to hold violators of human rights accountable. We urge the Council to recommend to the international community to implement the principle of universal jurisdiction. As we said here, over the last two years, all states should investigate and, evidence permitting, prosecute in a fair trial individuals found on their territories who are alleged to be responsible for human rights violations in Eritrea amounting to crimes under international law. We continue to urge the Council to recommend that all countries permit fleeing Eritreans to lodge asylum claims and then assess those claims fairly. For many Eritreans, a flight to freedom remains the only way to avoid the Eritrean government’s rampant brutalities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is East and Horn of Africa Human Rights Defenders Project.
Madam Vice President, on behalf of Civicus Defend Defenders, Eritrean Law Society, Human Rights Concern Eritrea, Information Forum for Eritrea, and One Day Seum, I would like to thank the special rapporteur for her dedication to furthering human rights in Eritrea. We also thank the panelists of this enhanced interactive dialogue for their contributions. Madam Vice President, pursuant to Resolution L13, we would like to inquire whether the Office of the High Commissioner can share results of its engagement with the government of Eritrea. The government of Eritrea was requested to strengthen its cooperation with OHCHR to communicate pertinent information regarding detained journalists and opposition members and to consider establishing an office in Eritrea. Has OHCHR seen any progress on any of these requests? In November 2017, a riot protest broke out in Eritrea at the Aldea Islamic School in Asmara after a member of the school’s board was arrested following a speech he made criticizing government interference in the private school’s affairs. In the footage that emerged from the scene, dozens of shots could be heard, although it was unclear if there were any casualties. No transparent or credible investigation was conducted, and no information emerged about the crackdown, the number of casualties, or the number of arrests. Was OHCHR able to conduct an investigation into the circumstances of this protest? The Commission of Inquiry on Human Rights in Eritrea called on the government of Eritrea to ensure accountability for past and persistent human rights violations amounting to crimes against humanity. So far, civil society has not recorded any significant institutional or legal reforms required by before the domestic legal system can hold perpetrators of international crimes to account in a fair and transparent manner. Mr. President, we wish to underline our support for the mandate of the special rapporteur and highlight its necessity until a time where the human rights record in Eritrea sees genuine improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Amnesty International.
Madam Vice President, Amnesty International welcomes the report of the special rapporteur and echoes calls to the Eritrean government for increased cooperation, as well as calls for accountability justice for past and continuing crimes in the country. Amnesty International remains concerned about the national service programme that continues to be the primary reason many Eritreans flee the country. We are also concerned about the increasing number of African and European states that are not accepting those fleeing as refugees. Most of those serving in the Eritrean national service programme are not paid a living wage. They serve for indefinite amounts of time, and there is no alternative civil service for those who object to military service on religious, ethical, or other contentious grounds. Amnesty International continues to receive reports of unwarranted government interference into religious affairs, especially through harassment of Pentecostals and government control of private schools, including religious ones. Amnesty International laments the lack of space for political dissent in Eritrea. The Eritrean government’s continued failure to provide information of fate or whereabouts of the politicians and journalists arrested in 2001 is widely concerning and remains a source of concern to us. So are the mass arrests of supporters of Hajimusa in the immediate aftermath of the 31st of October protest, when some of his supporters were arrested for attending his funeral this month. Amnesty International urges the Eritrean government to fully cooperate with the special rapporteur for Eritrea, including granting full and unfettered access to the country. Make efforts to respect the freedom of thought concerns of religious in Eritrea. Release information on the whereabouts of Haile Woldensay and others arrested with him and held incommunicado since 2011, as well as those arrested for testing the death of Mohammed Noor. Madam Special Rapporteur, what recommendations do you have to other states in their procedures for evaluation of Eritrean asylum claims and resettlement status determination considering the human rights situation in the country? Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Next speaker is United Nations Watch.
Thank you, Madam President. UN Watch welcomes today’s discussion of the grave situation of human rights in Eritrea, and we commend the work of the special rapporteur. We wish to call the attention of this council to three areas of urgent concern. First, religious freedom continues to be denied in Eritrea, and the situation is only getting worse. According to a recent report by Open Doors, harassment and murder of Christians accused of being agents of the West is commonplace. Thousands of Christians are in prison in Eritrea, some for more than 10 years now. Madam Rapporteur, is there a reason why your latest report only briefly mentions this issue? Are you fully aware of the scope of Eritrea’s grave and systematic violation of religious freedom and how Christians are specifically targeted? Second, the situation in Eritrean prisons is alarming. According to credible reports, shipping containers are used as prison cells despite extreme temperatures and with 30 to 40 people crammed into one container. Most notorious is the Arero Secret Prison. Just recently, we heard about the reported death in this prison of Mr. Woldensay, the dissident and former foreign minister. Thousands of others are detained for purely political reasons and under inhumane conditions. Finally, as a result of these and other flagrant violations of basic human rights and freedoms, tens of thousands of Eritreans continue to flee the country every year. If that were not bad enough, these victims, including those who have fled to European countries, have then been subjected to intimidation practices by Eritrean officials. Madam Rapporteur, what further steps can this council take to actually make a difference on the ground for millions of victims suffering in Eritrea? I thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Next speaker is Christian Solidarity Worldwide. Next speaker is Christian Solidarity Worldwide.
Thank you, Madame Vice President. I speak on behalf of Christian Solidarity Worldwide about the enforced disappearance of my father, Germano Nati Gojo. He is one of the politicians held incommunicado in Eritrea since September 2001, known as the G15. He joined the struggle for independence in 1976. He loves his country and is committed to its advancement. When arrests began in 2001, my father was on leave in Barantu. His relative died, and I met him at the wake. As we left, I told him I had heard on the radio his colleagues were jailed. He was shocked. I asked what he would do. He replied, “He too would go to prison.” Those were the last words we exchanged. He was arrested three days later by security agents as he listened to the radio on the veranda in pajamas. One stood outside the gate, the other entered and said, “Sir, we need you on a work-related issue.” Saying nothing, my father stood up and left with them. My 12-year-old sister gathered clothes and followed, but they did not see her. When they realized, she too was jailed briefly. We have not seen or heard from my father in 17 years despite inquiring. Madame Vice President, the Commission of Inquiry found Eritrea has committed crimes against humanity. My family provides a glimpse of this. My father and his colleagues suffered enforced disappearance for peacefully demanding rule of law. My sister was briefly detained underage. We are Kunama, a persecuted tribe. My mother suffered reprisal detention when I fled. I urge this Council to ignore disingenuous claims of human rights improvements. My father’s plight shows nothing has changed. I ask member states to prioritize justice and accountability instead, maintaining pressure until prisoners of consigns are free and rule of law is established. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now give the floor to our presenters for their concluding remarks. There is three minutes for each statement left, and I now give the floor first to Ms. Kate Gilmer.
Thank you very much indeed, Madame Vice President, and thank you distinguished delegates for your kind consideration of this panel’s contributions. Allow me to assure you that the High Commissioner’s office is keen to provide you with a full account of the technical cooperation with the government of Eritrea and will do so on the 14th of March. But just to give you a flavor of that report, I can advise that we are indeed working to propose projects of cooperation to the government, including on the administration of justice for the purpose of enabling reforms, legal reforms that can be in line with international obligations. Further, we have indeed offered training to Eritrean officials working specifically on UN treaty body reporting, and a delegation has been invited for this purpose and to provide a workshop that will be held in Kampala in April this year. In addition, a human rights adviser has been based in the UN country team in order to assist strengthening of the government’s efforts in cooperating with treaty bodies. I thank very much the distinguished delegates of Sudan and of China for their remarks rightly emphasizing how important it is for the state to engage constructively with the rapporteur, to do so in dialogue and mutual respect. In this regard, I note how important it is to understand impartiality, non-selectivity, and constructive engagement to be a two-way street, requiring the full engagement of the government. Excellencies, the test of mutual respect is not in how we manage agreement, but in how we manage the times when we disagree. And as the High Commissioner has said repeatedly, personalized verbal attacks against mandate holders are unacceptable and demean us all. Views contrary to those of the special rapporteur should be freely expressed; that’s only proper. But no disagreement with a message is made more legitimate by personalized attacks against a messenger. Such verbal assault of mandate holders is unworthy as it is unwarranted. And in this, I minded further to draw this Council’s attention to the fact that state officials’ most recent personalized verbal attacks against your special rapporteurs, as compared to substantive disagreement, have been directed almost exclusively against women special rapporteurs. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to Ms. Sheila Keteroot. You have the floor, madam.
Thank you very much to all those who have put questions to me. I’ll go on, you know, one after the other in terms of what was posed. The EU asks for an assessment of general trend of human rights in Eritrea. I have given you my assessment today with regards to all the listed violations, and I haven’t seen any progress on those. People are still continuing to be arrested, freedom of expression is still curtailed, and death in custody is indeed a reality. However, one of the things I’d like to raise at this point is the lack of access. Independent observers and researchers continue to be denied access. There is still no free and independent reporting on the situation by Eritreans from within the country. Sharing information abroad, including short video clips of events as they happen or suspicion of doing so, can expose oneself to arrest and detention. In such circumstances, claims made by the government regarding their adherence to human rights norms cannot be verified. Sustained scrutiny is therefore critical, and given the continuing serious human rights situation, it is even more critical today. Now, the other issue I’d like to talk about is to the respected delegates from China, Venezuela, and Sudan. How do you engage with an interlocutor who is not even in the room? It was my first step when I took the mandate to engage with the country concerned, and I didn’t engage with anybody else before going first to the country. So it’s a difficult situation, which I would urge you, if you do have the opportunity to discuss with the country concerned, in order to open gates for further collaboration and discussion. Now, the other thing I’d like to raise quickly is I’ve been asked what progress, what is there in terms of how to open dialogue. I have one question, and it is this one, which I’d like to pose. There are certain countries who have indeed engaged and which is quite a good opening. So I would pose this question: What tangible progress have been achieved on the ground regarding fundamental human rights I have dealt with today, which have been dealt with previously in my reports and in the reports of the Commission of Inquiry? What concrete steps have been taken by the government for necessary transformation from my vantage point? And in all humility, I find very little. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to Mr. Remi Nogilombo, please.
Madame Vice President du Conseil, Madame la Ho Commissaire Adjointe du Ho Commissariat au Droit de l’Homme. J’ai payé des questions spécifiques au nom de ma collègue rapporteur pays d’hérité que je remplace cet après-midi. Toutefois, l’absence du gouvernement éritreien en ce forum ne peut pas être perçue comme un signe de désespoir. La prochaine session de la Commission Africaine de Droit de l’Homme et des Peuples sera une occasion nous offerte tous, vous et nous, pour écouter les préoccupations des gouvernements et de la société civile ici représentées. Grâce à la complémentarité des mécanismes onusiens et ceux de la Commission Africaine de Droit de l’Homme et des Peuples, nous espérons obtenir des réponses du gouvernement de ce pays après qu’il aura présenté ce rapport au cours de la session ordinaire de la Commission Africaine de Droit de l’Homme et des Peuples qui aura lieu en Mauritani, fin avril jusqu’au mi-mai. Nous nous engageons personnellement parce que nous avons suivi les préoccupations des gouvernements et de la société civile à devoir reposer quelqu’une des questions pertinentes à ce gouvernement et pouvoir obtenir des réponses qui conviennent. Voilà un peu ce que je voulais dire. Je vous remercie.
Thank you. I give the floor to Ms. Veronica Almadon again.
Thank you, Mrs. Ambassador of Djibouti. I would like to reply to your question by saying that I wasn’t able to finish my statement, but at the end of my statement, I was going to ask the same question: How can we support the special rapporteur and how can member states be more efficient in the way they interact with the Eritrean delegation? But then I realized that it’s actually what I was trying to illustrate in my presentation, the fact that we lack, the Eritrean government has not been showing enough deliveries, and we don’t see its presence here. So the state that we’re in is that we’re having a conversation between member states, the special rapporteur, UNDP, OHCHR, the civil society, but the main stakeholder is missing. And it takes its presence, but it takes also good faith and it takes willingness to take this issue to the next level. So what I would say is just that member states have to keep supporting the mandate of the special rapporteur, give her all the necessary resources so that we keep this platform for victims that don’t have any other platform other than this one, and that also we keep ensuring the asylum rights to all these Eritrean victims that are stuck in very dangerous areas such as Libya. So these two, I think, are necessary, maintaining the pressure and keeping the asylum rights. Thank you.
Thank you. And now the floor goes to Ms. Pamela Delaga, please.
Thank you. First, a quick response to the delegation from Australia who mentioned the issue of gender-based violence and sexual violence. Just one sentence to say about this: Among Eritrean women and girls who are in Israel, arriving across the Mediterranean, in Libya, and in other places in the world, the question about their experience of sexual violence is not a question anymore. It has to be an assumption. The majority have had such experiences, and we have a population here of girls and women who have serious needs for both clinical care and for counseling and other kinds of support. Many other delegations have asked what will it take to improve the human rights situation. I’d like to pose some possible answers for improvements in the human rights situation and the return of Eritreans home. What do I think it will take? Four things. First of all, and this is very important, is the normalization of relations in the region and in the international community, and particularly with Ethiopia. This includes the implementation of the Algiers Agreement and the International Court ruling on border demarcation, an issue which has been left pending for much too long and for which the international community can provide assistance. Normalization would not only then remove a perceived need for unending national service, but could also open trade and economic relations with neighbors and quickly improve economic conditions in Eritrea. Secondly, I would propose that an important factor could be the return to the very honorable ideals of the Eritrean independent struggle. These include respect for equality across peoples, across religions, across ethnic groups, and between men and women, empowerment of women and girls, the spirit of self-reliance, innovation, and respect for open and constructive dialogue and discussion, and establishment of institutions for good governance and rule of law. Eritrea has a number of positive lessons to share with the world, but the world cannot see those lessons because of the damper of these other human rights situations. Third, reconciliation between Eritreans in and outside of Eritrea will be very important to stop the flow of refugees, but also to improve the situation in the country. And this has to include transparency about arrests and disappearances of dozens of the founding mothers and fathers of the country, of religious leaders, of journalists, and of many, many others. And surely, this must also include the fair trial or release of political prisoners. And lastly, I would say support for the safe return of Eritreans outside, whatever their political positions, their religious beliefs, their family connections, or their histories in areas of settlement. Reconciliation will be critical for rebuilding Eritrea and rebuilding faith in Eritrea. To have this happen, Eritreans outside also continue to need protection wherever they are, access to basic services, education, and health, because they will return someday, and they can only return and help build a safe and peaceful country if they themselves are healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. This brings us to the end of the Enhanced Interactive Dialogue on the Human Rights Situation in Eritrea. I wish to thank all the presenters for their presence, for their input and the presentations we had today, and of course, also the contributions from delegations. I will now make maybe a very short break before, no, because we have one point, that is the right of reply. So we just continue. I understand that we have a delegation that wants to exercise the right of reply, and I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Israel. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Madame Vice President. We would like to exercise the right of reply in reaction to interventions made by the representatives of Syria and Iran in the discussion that took place this morning on the report of the late special rapporteur in Iran. During their interventions, these representatives referred to the State of Israel using terms that are unacceptable in United Nations deliberations. It is easy to dismiss the use of such terms as a futile attempt to divert attention from the issue at hand, in this case, the crucial examination of the dire human rights situation in the Islamic Republic of Iran. Clearly, this attempt failed utterly as the Council continued with its important discussion on operation in Iran, shedding light on the many violations occurring in this country every day. Nevertheless, we believe that this kind of behavior should not be allowed to continue unchecked, as this is anything but a technical exchange on terminology. Madame Vice President, it is deplorable that 70 years after the establishment of the State of Israel in accordance with the United Nations resolution, there are member states which still insist on ignoring reality and refrain from recognizing Israel. Indeed, it was absurd to hear the representative of the murderous government of Syria use this diversion tactic to try and help its Iranian backer undermine their discussion. But this will not help them. Israel is there flourishing democracy where universal human rights are upheld and promoted, not regarded with contempt as they are by Iran’s radical rulers. It is a model knowledge-based economy where opportunity for human development bounds. Most importantly, in this context, the State of Israel is proud to be the fulfillment of the Zionist vision of re-establishing the self-determination of the Jewish people in its historical land. It is almost inconceivable that in 2018, there are still those who refuse to accept this fact. Those like Iran and Syria, who continue to brutally violate the human rights of their own people, are certainly not in a position to question that. I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. This brings us to the end of the meeting. We will reconvene tomorrow at nine AM to begin with the high-level panel discussion on violations of the human rights of children in the Syrian Arab Republic. And I hereby declare close to the thirtieth meeting of the thirty-seventh session of the Human Rights Council.